In the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City of Trinidad City Council meeting. We are reconvening from closed session with nothing to report. No action was taken tonight in closed session. Start with the flag salute, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
So we'll start with the agenda for tonight. Counsel, any questions or changes that you'd like to make to tonight's agenda? Any suggestions? All right, I'll go to members of the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to suggest changes to tonight's agenda? None, then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
There are moves to approve the agenda. I'll make them.
Okay, Bryce, Mr. Pro, Jack seconded, all those in favor. Aye, so the agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on then to approval of, excuse me, of minutes. We have minutes from July eighth, August sixth, and September ninth. And those were in the packet. And are there any, I've reviewed them, have we all had a chance to review them? And are there any questions or changes from the council?
Just commendations to say.
Yeah.
Big lift.
I'm prepared to. July and September, but since I wasn't there for the August meeting. Think for now.
Okay, and let's do that. If there are no questions about these, I'm going to go to public comment first. Any questions or comments from the public on any of the minutes from those three meetings I just mentioned? Okay, and then back to the council. So what we can do is we can have, we'll do, we'll need to do these individually. So we'll start with someone, a move to approve the July eighth.
Move to approve the July eighth.
Okay, and I will second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then we need a motion for August. I can do that, move to approve.
I wasn't there, but I can.
Right, I know you would abstain.
You can say it, I mean, it's fair.
Yeah.
You don't know what.
It is kind of, it is kind of optional. You can read the minutes and, you know, maybe you've watched the video or, yeah. So I will move to approve August sixth. Minutes, I can bet. Jack seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Katie, did you want to abstain or?
Wait, wait, are we doing August?
August.
I'm sorry, that's.
That's when you wanted abstaining on this.
So do we have a forum?
Yes, we would still have a forum because you were here in August. Carrie was here.
What was the month?
Well, okay, let's start over.
That special one you called.
That was six.
That's August third. So apologies, I forgot that that was the one that neither of you were there. So we did have a forum because we had Counselor Varela there. I think what we're going to do on that is we are going to. What are we going to do? Because we don't have a forum for.
In view of the usual.
Departure.
Year old, I'm going to be wild and vote yes, even though I was asked to nay.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that and you've read them, I think I'm comfortable with that. So we will have.
Confidence. That they're prepared.
Yes, and I read them and we were there, so. Okay, so Jack and I are first and second. We have all in favor, Jack, myself, and Bryce, and Katie abstaining.
Do I need to abstain?
You can, you can do whatever you want.
I don't abstain.
Okay, so Katie's approved as well, having read those minutes. And we just need to note that it was just Jack and I and Carrie, I guess. Apologies for this procedural, you know, kind of complexity here. Okay, September ninth.
I'll move to approval of the September minutes.
Okay, Grace, and Katie seconding, and then all those in favor. And then Jack's, so all those in favor, we've got three of us. Does that make sense over there? Okay, and then Jack tuttle is abstaining because he was not in that meeting. So we've just had three meetings where it's just been, you know, a little, a little different in terms of the council. So thanks for everyone's patience. And staff, are you good with all of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, good. Okay, then we are ready to move on to council reports and committee assignments. Who would like to start tonight?
I'll start, I have nothing to report.
Okay.
Yeah, this month, the HCOG meeting is on Thursday, so I'll move the meeting, yes, but I have nothing to report.
And.
I have nothing to report, I'm thinking.
Okay. All right, and I unfortunately do, but need to get to my, unfortunately do, need to get to my notes. I'm going to do a few quick things, meetings I attended, and then I want to get to the town hall paint colors as part of my report out. So I attended the LAFCO meeting on September seventeenth. And LAFCO approved a reconsideration to exclude all Humboldt Redwood Company parcels from the Neyland Fire Protection District annexation. So it was kind of a pullback on a prior decision that LAFCO made to expand the Neyland Fire Protection District and including these timberlands, these commercial timberlands. And Humboldt Redwood said, no, you can't include those lands in this agreement per California state law. So LAFCO, so the LAFCO Board, which I serve on, was hesitant to do that because we wanted all parties to participate in the fire protection agreement. But what we decided to do was, you know, fight this battle more at the Sacramento level than at the Humboldt County level. And so, you know, change the law versus trying to kind of attempt to win a court case. I also participated in the mayor selection committee meeting on September twenty-fourth. In that meeting, our Kada council members were appointed to the board of access Humboldt, also to the Humboldt County redevelopment oversight board. And I was appointed as the vice chair for the mayor selection committee. And then the GTA or Greater Trinidad Area Cert team, we had a leadership meeting on September twenty-fifth. We met via Zoom and we solidified plans for a block party to be held on October twenty-sixth from noon to three P M. And there's handouts in the room for those who are interested. But that'll be a big disaster preparedness block party to kind of kick us off before the storm season. HMRA, I attended that this afternoon. That's the hazardous materials response team. And mainly, we just went through kind of what training has gone on with them and their, the two thousand and twenty-six meeting schedule. So now, without further ado, let's talk about the voting for the Trinidad Town Hall paint colors. And we do have a winner. Ding ding ding, oh, it hurts. Forgot it, left it out. So we'll have to look at this after, I'll get bigger paint swatches. But whirlpool blue will be the body. So it's kind of a gray blue, it's a beautiful gray and blue, yeah. And then the trim will be alabaster, which is kind of an alabaster white. And then we have this beautiful navy for the top of the building to kind of create some contrast for the doors and so forth. So I will post bigger paint swatches outside for everyone to see. But we did have a legitimate voting that went on, and this is the winner, so.
Yay.
And then Gabe will talk about the windows, which are going to get replaced soon. Okay, that was rather long, that's my report. So are there any questions from the council about any of the reports? Okay, any questions from the public, members of the public regarding tonight's committee reports? And other announcements? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and move us on to the public safety report and turn it over to our interim city manager for that report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the council, I am going to toss this to Josh McCall, Lieutenant Josh McCall, who is currently with us on Zoom. Now, the floor.
All right, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, perfect, perfect. Yeah, so looking at stats for the month of September for Trinidad proper, calls for service only up by a couple from the previous month. We had fifty-five, I believe it was, in August for a total, we were at fifty-seven for September. Nothing that really stands out. Majority of those were patrol checks or just general Trinidad town patrols at eleven apiece. So that was almost, you know, close to half of that total. And then we had six transfers to other agencies, a handful of public assist calls, three unwanted subject calls, a couple of nine-one-one hangups, and incorrigible juveniles. And then a couple of suspicious person and suspicious, ten suspicious vehicle calls each. And then other than that, just a bunch of one-call type things, a nine-one-one missed dial, an alarm, a camping violation, CWS cross referral report, an eviction. There was one domestic violence call. And then one missing person call, and then it looks like a vehicle investigation and a recovered stolen vehicle. So nothing that stands out as crazy, changes or numbers or anything shooting up stats-wise, looking at that. I don't have the Greater Trinidad area, obviously going outside the city stats right in front of me. But I did look at those earlier, they just got done today. The calls for service overall in that were down a handful, I want to say about fifteen, seventeen calls for service down from the previous month for that greater outside area. With that, though, felony investigations and misdemeanor investigations were both up by, I think, I think, what, like eight or ten apiece over that from last month. But none of the other numbers on there seemed to stand out, so. And that wasn't done until this afternoon, so I wasn't able to kind of look at those felony and misdemeanor investigations just to see what corresponded to those as far as what the source of those calls, those cases were, to see if there was any, any kind of a pattern or anything like that. But again, that's, that's including the greater area, so obviously a wider area outside of that to account for all those calls for service. Aside from that, that's all I have for the stats. I will throw in, and I apologize if I already talked about this previously, but between the different city councils and various community service district meetings and stuff I go to, sometimes I mix them up and what I've already talked to you about with who. But we did start our problem-oriented policing team started this week. That is a grant-funded, there are two grant-funded deputies that are going to be focused on what it sounds like problem-oriented policing. So their primary task will be dealing with like problem locations, residences, things like that. There is, because of how that grant money comes through, there is an opioid nexus to it. So a lot of this is going to be related to drug house type things or things that have some type of a drug nexus to them as far as what they, they kind of focus on. Doesn't mean they won't touch on some other areas with that. But they'll be dealing with some stuff that maybe the, doesn't necessarily rise to the, the level of problem type, sales type thing or something that Drug Task Force or somebody might typically address. Or it could be hand-in-hand with them. But anyways, those deputies started that this week, so we are definitely excited to have that. It's good to have some other, other units to definitely give some attention to different problem areas in the, in the county that maybe are, you know, not as easy for patrol when they're going to call to call and stuff like that and in that to focus that attention on. So short of that, unless somebody else has questions, that's all I have.
That's great, thank you. Are there questions from the council or Lieutenant McCall?
Questions, and thank you for all the good work you do for the city.
Absolutely, I think Gabe has like, what, comments or questions?
First of all, I just want to say that I've had several very positive interactions with members of the public that have needed service from law enforcement. And the calls, the response times have been within ten to fifteen minutes, which I think is pretty good for emergencies and even some non-emergency situations. But I also, since while I have Josh on the call here, I want to, I want to give him some props. I think he does a tremendous job for the city. He's very responsive to me when I call, and I want to communicate with him some needs of the city. But also, I had the pleasure today of meeting Josh Boyer, who is a deputy working for the city. He was standing out front when I got here this afternoon. And come to find out, I actually wanted to talk to the deputy because every time I see him, I want to get their number. You know, I want to talk to him, I want to know, want to have contacts. And this, this gentleman was, I, first thing I said, I said, are you here picking up a kid from school on private beaches? Or are you here, you know, at work? And he said, oh, you know, he's a deputy that grew up here in Trinidad, off stage go through, and went to school, I believe, with Angela Catherine and Cameron. And he's now been assigned day shifts, and he makes extra trips to Trinidad because not only does his daughter go to school here at Trinidad School, but his family lives up on stage go through. So we're getting a little extra attention, and I love to hear that story. So thanks, Lieutenant Josh, for, if you had a hand in reorienting his schedule to be out here in Trinidad.
I can't take any, any credit for that. They picked by seniority, and like I said, like he said, he kind of lives up in that, that area. So I think it makes sense for him to be up there, and he's typically been a night shifter in the past, and then he decided to switch it up. So he's also one of our field training officers, that, he's a corporal that trains our new deputies as well. So I'm glad to hear that he was, you know, making a, making a pass through there. And, yeah, that we definitely like to hear when you guys are having good experiences with getting, getting the service that we hope to provide. And on the same token, obviously, when things don't go according to plan, you know, we obviously want to know about that as well. But I'm glad it's, it's on the positive side. So with that, I think there's also, if I remember right, and I could be mixing up my days, but I think the school's having a lunch on the lawn thing tomorrow that a couple of deputies are planning on being at. And I'm going to do my best to get up there as well. So if I make it up there, I'll drive by and swing by City Hall and say hi as well.
That's great, yeah. And before you go, I guess I'll ask, are there any comments or questions from members of the public for Lieutenant McCall? All right, I guess we can let you go. Thank you so much for joining us once again, really appreciate it.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Right, anything else on that, Gabe? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on then to our items from the floor. At this time, members of the public can address the council with items that are not on tonight's agenda. And comments from the council will be somewhat limited, but if anybody has anything, this is a good time to come forward. Okay, I don't see any items from the floor this evening, so we'll just move right along to the consent agenda. So for the council, any items that you'd like to pull from the consent for discussion?
No. No, just, just want to note before I go to approve consent agenda, the annual audit report was somewhat interesting. I enjoyed some of the comparative analysis that is in there relative to past years and percentages of general fund budget that are funded through property tax, sales and use tax, occupancy tax and so forth. But also nice, real useful comparison on page hundred and six of the of the packet. Yeah. Guess I would approve the consent agenda.
We're going to continue to get council to add comments, and then I have to give a couple of comments, and then we'll approve. Any other council comments about the consent agenda, things that you'd like to pull? And I guess my only comment is that it's really great to be caught up on all the auditing. So thank you to staff for doing that, because that was, that was a big deal. And it's been a kind of a, you know, ongoing thing, so appreciate you catching us up there. And are there any public comments about tonight's consent agenda? Things that you would like us to go deep on? All right, then in that case, I'll bring it back to the council. And Bryce, I believe you were ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Katie, all those in favor? Aye, so moved. So the consent agenda has been approved for tonight. And with that, then we will move on to tonight's discussion, action item and action. And agenda items, my goodness. So we're going to start with the annual unmet transit needs hearing. And I'll turn it over to our city manager, and we may have a guest as well, I believe, for this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, we do have a guest. But before I introduce HCOG's Associate Regional Planner, Stevie Luther, who's with us on Zoom, there he is. I'll just say that each year, HCOG conducts a citizen participation process to assess unmet transit needs within Humboldt County. Public is invited during the hearing to express their opinions, solutions, complaints, or suggestions regarding Humboldt County's public transportation systems and or general unmet transit needs. And this is our annual hearing. And I'll turn it over to Stevie to maybe add a little more color to this process. And I believe also Richard Johnson's on the call too. I'm guessing we may want to hear from him, who also represents, represents HCOG. So, let Stevie take you away.
Great, thank you so much. It's nice to be here with the city council. And yeah, this is the, the annual process. And we will evaluate any comments that we hear about whether those unmet transit needs are reasonable to meet or not according to adopted criteria. We do that process through the Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, of which Richard Johnson is our chair. And when we adopt a findings of unmet transit needs, it allows the local transportation funds, which are based on tax revenues, to go towards local streets projects and also for the, the transit funds to be used for the JPA assessment for the HGA operations. And so any comments that we receive are logged, and even if they aren't found to be reasonable to meet, they are considered and provide a good log of needs that, that we do need to address in the future when funding becomes available. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions if they come up.
All right, any questions from the council? Or Stevie? Okay. Any questions from members of the public on the unmet transit needs? Do you have any? Yes, would you mind coming to the podium just so they can hear that online? Thank you.
Hi, Richard, hi, Stevie. I'm Carol Monet. I'm speaking as a citizen and not as a member of any communities or organizations that I'm on. I recently did the week without driving, which was a real eye-opener. And I had some thoughts. I know that there can't be more buses that come to Trinidad. I know that the reasons, you know, so there's, as anyone who's taken a bus knows, there are northbound, they arrive here, there's six buses every day, and southbound, I believe, there's seven. If you want to get any place, this is inadequate. But then there's like fifteen buses that come just about every hour to the airport. Now, the problem is, if people could take the bus from the airport into Arcata or Eureka, that would alleviate a lot of congestion, parking, things that people complain about. But there's no parking at the airport. You have to, you know, park in that, pay a bunch of money thing. So it doesn't really make taking the bus advantageous, it makes it rather annoying. Also, there's no parking anywhere near the airport, apologies. I will try to be less Italian. So my suggestion is perhaps to get some kind of parking or adequate bicycle storage at the airport. And of course, I want more buses in Trinidad. I'm an old lady and I plan to get older, and at some point, I won't be able to drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks.
That's a great suggestion, thank you. Other comments or suggestions from members of the public regarding unmet transit needs? All right, then I guess we will bring it back to the council. And unless there are other things, I guess it's a big thank you for joining us tonight and for doing this work, this important work in surveying the transit needs. And we appreciate being a part of it every year.
Yeah. Did you?
I have, yes. So I'm on the Humboldt Transit Authority, which is kind of works really closely with HCOG. And they are working with a micro, they're going to be working with a microtransit to Trinidad to fill that need. Because right now, you're not, we're not getting, no one takes the bus to the airport because you don't, it doesn't correlate with when we're flying out. So they're going to do it down like a, like a pilot program for people to actually call to get a microtransit to the airport and back and pick them up, which is going to be in the road app in the next six months. They're working on also that detail. But yeah, I think that was a great, great idea. And if you ever want to join the Humboldt Transit Authority meetings, it's the first, first Tuesday of the month at nine A M. And you can zoom on in and share those, those, those feedbacks because we don't get enough people showing up to those meetings to actually take the bus.
Great. Other comments from the council? Before I close, okay. All right, thanks again, Stevie and Richard, for joining us. You're welcome to stay on, but we'll let you go if you prefer to do other things, like dinner. Okay, not that we're thinking about dinner or anything. Okay, so we are going to go ahead and move on to item number two, which is a discussion decision to appoint two council members to represent the city in government-to-government meetings. And in this case, it'll be with the two tribal governments, the Rantoria and the Yaroc tribe. Any, did you want to preface this, Gabe, or shall we?
Um, I, I had a little bit of background in the packet, but I think all the council members present are familiar with the process of nominating two of your own to represent.
Okay. Well, we can nominate the same two people for both, or we can do, or we can do separate nominations. And I guess I usually like to start by, is anybody interested? And if so, you know, it's better to, to volunteer than to be volunteered. So I thought I'd ask that first.
I'm interested.
Okay. Katie or Jack, are you guys interested? No, okay.
Well, I'm interested, it's, I don't, I don't, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, and some of the meetings are in the afternoon, three or four now. Is that, that's still a problem for you, though, right?
Sometimes, sometimes, it's kind of unpredictable.
Okay. All right, I just want to check and get you that opportunity. So, so I am fine with putting my name in the hat then.
One more committee meeting?
Yeah, no, no, no. I like the government-to-government meetings. I love to have the discussions with the tribal governments and understand their concerns and try to come to, you know, some agreements on things that, you know, if there are things that, that are, need to be resolved. So let me, so I guess the proposal on the table then is for the mayor and vice mayor to be in the G two Gs for both the Yaroc tribe and the Rantoria. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go to public comment and see if there are any questions, comments, concerns from members of the public about that assignment. All right, I don't see any public comment, so I will bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move that you and Bryce, the two representatives for the G two G meetings, both the G two Gs.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we should clarify that this would be an ad hoc committee.
Yes.
Not understanding.
That is correct, thank you. Okay, and with that in mind, is there a second for the motion?
Second that.
All right, Jack is second to, second to. I can't even say the word. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to discussion decision regarding the two thousand and twenty-five Job Class Communication and Compensation Study Report, prepared by Regional Government Services. And we've been waiting for this report so that we can dot our i's and cross our t's. And I'll turn it over to our city manager for taking us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I've got some notes here, I'm going to go over briefly a little bit of the background for anybody in the room that's interested in this topic. Obviously, we have a few folks here tonight, but also just to recap how we got here. So this topic was first introduced by this topic was first introduced by the council uh to the council by former city manager Karen Suker in twenty sixteen. It's budgeted, it was a budget priority that carried for for several years, but never gained traction. That needed to become a reality of the city. Um, staffing challenges following the COVID era, hiring, uh forced hiring decisions that subsequently created inequities in job pay and pay rates, job duties, and complicated our organizational function. Uh, the risks associated with these inequities prompted a serious need for professional third party review of the city's job classification structure and compensation package and policy. So staff presented findings and illustrated the needs for this study during budget preparations last year in May of twenty twenty four. The council prioritized the project upon adoption of the twenty twenty five budget since July first this year. Uh, this, I'm sorry, this is July first last year, twenty twenty four. Uh, former city manager Joe Tagliabashi brought this proposal forward to engage with Regional Government Services to conduct the study. And on March eleventh of this year, the council approved twenty five thousand dollar contract with RGS. Project began with staff feeding RGS with the current city policies, organizational structure, long range vision and needs, current job description and employee policies. The second phase consisted of a deep dive questionnaire survey that each employee was requested to complete in their own orders, helping RGS better understand the employees' own understanding of their positions uh with detailed tasks and responsibilities listed. Each survey was submitted and reviewed by the city management for concurrence. The third phase of the conflict of the of the classification study was RGS digesting the information provided. They developed a legitimate job index versions and titles that match the duties that were described. And they can add to the compensation study page based on the framework that was created. And city management fully supports classification titles and job descriptions proposed in this document by RGS. The importance of this project, it it can't be understated. There are significant feature risks associated with unstructured job descriptions, undercurrent hiring practices, and the absence of a clear path that staff can rely on during their employment. Clear job descriptions are essential tools required by required to carry out annual performance evaluations. And their compensation and policies create the predictability needed to attract and retain valuable employees, which are an organization's most valuable asset and also direction, very clear direction given to staff by council in the adoption of not only this year's budget, but the prior budget. The compensation study component, RGS was uh will be represented tonight um by classification and compensation team leader, but lead advisor Patty Howard, who is with us on the screen, uh, who will be available to answer questions. Detailed questions about the study findings, in particular, the median income concluded that forms the basis for the target rate of the pay recommended for each position identified in this plan. The study focuses on internal alignment and implementation components summarized on pages eleven and twelve. The rationale for the alignment is to create salary differential between series classifications based on human resources practices, recognizing the complexity of the work expected at each level, and the differences in experience and certification required to perform these duties. The cost of implementing the salaries adjustments is described on page twelve. Alignment of the current salaries to market median ranges approximately from fifteen to thirty-three percent, and that's based on each employee. So we can talk about, I'll I'll mention real quick and now I'll let, I'll I'll turn this over to Patty. Um, due to the complexity of identifying sustainable resources to fund this alignment and tool, staff is recommending a ten percent increase across the board upon adoption of this policy tonight to show good faith in response by the council in recognizing the findings presented in this report. The flat dollar monthly adjustment impact to the payroll budget would just be under eighteen hundred dollars. That's the loaded cost of this ten percent increase that's proposed. And the savings achieved from not only having the city manager's salary currently uh for several months, plus not having hired a grant administrator this year, along with not having the full salary applied to the in-house T three operator will more than cover this increase for the rest of this year. Part two of this phase, as identified in the motion on page thirteen, um and in and above at the top of this uh step report, is to allow time for staff to perform necessary financial analysis and develop a phased in approach that provides increases over a multi-year period until the salaries for all classifications are competitive with the market. So with that said, I'm going to introduce Patty and I also want to say that it was a absolute pleasure working with uh RGS. They were very professional. Uh, and also Patty here apparently is a Humboldt State alumni, which I discovered after working with her for several hours, many hours on this process throughout the last couple of months. And um, that was fun to hear at the conclusion of our work together. But here's Patty and what I, what I wanted, I mentioned to Patty that I'd like her to talk about specifically. I can vouch for the comp uh for the job classifications. I know what we need and I was with each employee with every step of the way in developing these job descriptions. Uh, what I want to hear specifically speak on was the compensation component because this is a third party view of the city system. It's not something that I'm, you know, proposing. I want to make sure that it's very clear that uh outside agency, a third party firm who specializes in this uh can can articulate to you how we, how how they uh reach the conclusions with the compensation. So Patty, if uh you can hear us well, you you can have the floor.
Sure. Well, um, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I can't tell you how much I wanted to be there in person. Um, Humboldt County is my my favorite place in the world, but I digress. Anyway, so yes, we um, after we did the class study and I gave uh kudos to you, you explained the process very well. We um met with staff and and talked to them about their work and uh learned a lot about what it is they do. And uh the uh job classifications that you have in your packet, those are, those are the um result of the that study. Um, we, when a an agency wants both a class and comp study, we always recommend you do the classification study first. Um, that way your class plan is set. You know that the job descriptions that you have um reflect the jobs that people are doing. Um, and uh it's been confirmed because then what we do is we go out and take those job descriptions and compare them to the job descriptions of other agencies, right? So if yours aren't up to date, then the data we get can be skewed. It it just can't be uh relied upon. So we did that class study. Um, in in the report, we've uh listed the agencies that we uh surveyed. And we came up with those agencies by doing an analysis where we look at basically standard factors. We look at um the services provided by the agency, the size of the agency, the population served, the cost of living, um geographical location, um, a combination of those. Not, not all of them fit neatly in each of those boxes, but in general, um, we look at those and um do the analysis and and I'll look at uh uh which ones kind of rise to the top. Um, we looked in this case, um, let's see, we uh selected ten agencies to look at. Um, City of Arcata, Blue Lake, Eureka, Ferndale, Fortuna, Plymouth, uh Portola, Rio Del, Westmoreland, and the county. Um, and some of those, again, because they're, you could look at the county and go, how would that be comparable to us? Well, what we're also looking at is recruitment and retention issues. So usually, if we're looking at a city, we also include the county that um um in which they exist. Um, because oftentimes that is a competitor for people. Um, we survey surveyed for all of the classifications in the class plan. Um, when we uh, when all was said and done, there were, um, let's see, I'm going, I'm sorry, I'm I'm having trouble with my internet today, so everything is running just a little slowly. Um, we did the seven classifications. Um, we looked at salary and we looked at a variety of benefits, medical, dental, vision, retirement, uh, different kinds of leaves, uh, other um components might be certification pays. We looked at um uh different comp uh payments. Um, looked at so uh part of retirement, we looked at social security as well. So all of those make up the total compensation of a classification. And what we're looking at is what does that position, what does that class cost the agency in which it resides? And how does that compare to um those in in the city of Tr- Trinidad? So what we, what we um look for and and what Gabe uh referred to is we normally look at the median um when we are compiling data. And in the spreadsheets we provided to you, um, there is a summary sheet that gives you kind of an overview of the of the classifications that we looked at and whether they're over or under the median of the um comparator agencies. Um, we look at the median instead of the average or mean. And we recommend that because that really is the the central data point for the group of um uh classifications that we're looking at. It is the middle of the, kind of the middle of the pack. Sometimes when you do the average, the average can be skewed by the outliers, you know, if there are agencies that pay really high or really low. Um, uh, I know some uh consultants or some vendors may do a thing where they take all the, you know, they do the average, but then they throw out the the high and low. We choose to to recommend the median for that. I can't see you all and some of you don't have video, so I just wanted to say, if anyone has any questions, just speak up, please. Because once I start talking, I mean, I'll just be on a roll.
Thank you. We'll start with the council. Um, any questions or comments from the council first?
Not so far.
Okay.
I I had a question and that was, and I'm looking for the the um, the way that it was worded, but it was that some of the positions that were looked at, um, there was sufficient data and other positions there were not.
Yes.
And I was wondering how I should think about that.
So, um, I'll tell you that in all the time I've done compensation studies, it hardly ever happens that we have sufficient data for every single classification. Um, we use a rule of four. So what we're looking for, so let me back up just a little. When we go out to the other agencies, I talked about the the job descriptions. We don't just, you know, if you have a administrative assistant, we just don't, we don't go out to all of the other cities or agencies and go, oh, what's the salary for an admin assistant? We look at the actual job description. We look at what are the duties of that job of that admin assistant? What are the knowledges and skills? What are the minimum qualifications? Who do they report to? All of those kinds of things. Um, and they really need to match on all levels. I mean, we never get a hundred percent match, but we need to feel conf- confident that these really are comparable positions because job titles, unfortunately, in some agencies, job titles don't always reflect what you think they should or would. Um, so uh when we do that, oftentimes we may find that um perhaps the job title's the same and some of the duties are the same, but then maybe there are additional duties that someone does. And and because we don't know the percentages, they really aren't a match. You know, they can be a hybrid kind of classification. So um, if we don't have at least four, what we call match classes, we don't feel that we can really recommend a salary based on the data points that we have. Um, because that, like I say, it happens often and and certainly in bigger agencies where they have many levels within, say, a class series, we don't survey every single classification. We normally do the benchmark class uh or the benchmark, I'm sorry, the journey level class, and then we extrapolate from there. And so what we do when we don't have enough matches is we do an internal tie analysis. And that's kind of what what we, that was certainly what we had to do here at Trinidad. So then what we look at is we look, okay, well, we didn't get enough for this position, but are there other positions, even if they're in a different department or a different area, that maybe have the same requirements or the the work is, the complexity of the work is similar, or they report to the same people, um, that kind of thing to see um what that relationship is. And so our, some of our recommendations are based on internal ties. So that was a big, long dis- description of for, you know, answer to your question.
You answered my question very well. Thank you. I am, I guess, you know, for me, this has just been kind of a long overdue, um, you know, process that we needed to do to to be more professional, to have good, um, you know, hygiene around roles and pay equity.
Yes.
And and um, and I think it establishes a very structured kind of pay system and um, you know, the positions are articulated well and it's not as confusing for staff. I I looked at um two of the roles, the city manager and the assistant city manager and and I wondered about the, you know, kind of the budget um required to have two senior managers. Um, and I answered my own question a bit because um you know, we just had recently our city manager left and if we hadn't had an assistant city manager of the caliber that we do, we would have probably spent way more than we're going to invest in having those two roles in just shoring up because, you know, grant timeline, not grant timelines necessarily were missed, but you know, different budgetary items were missed and things didn't happen and it could, we could be fine and so forth and so on. So uh I kind of got myself to the point of thinking that it's an extremely good investment. And and so that's why I I just wanted to be kind of transparent about uh my thought process and let's see, I'm just, I'm going through my notes. Um, I I worry a little bit about grant funding as a risk factor for uh supporting the the investments in 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 Trinidad staff. But I think it's, it's something we've been really successful with over the years, and so I'm not too concerned about it, but it's just something we should flag, I guess. And then I guess lastly, you know, doing this in a phased approach because I do support people, you know, I'm a big, big believer in paying people what they're worth and and then some whenever you can. And and you will, in the long run, it will pay off because you're going to have a really high functioning team. So I'm a huge supporter of that. I just think that what we may have to do from a practical standpoint is to layer this in, you know, over the next two to three years. Um, so you know, those are, those are kind of my big comments. So you're great study, really glad we're doing this. Um, really understand kind of the need for the the senior management positions. Um, and then the kind of the risk of the budget overall, we kind of need to roll into this, I think, over a period of time. And that's, that's all I have. Other comments from the council?
Uh, I want to agree with Cheryl in commending this uh report. I was quite impressed. Been overwhelming for all the data that came through. Uh, and I just want to clarify with you, Gabe, that you said you're proposing a ten percent raise across the staff in order to sort of move the dial towards our goal of fair uh compensation based on this report. Is that right?
Yes, and and that was, that's based on a couple of things. Number one, uh, as you can see, I I don't know if you saw the chart, I could probably bring it up if we needed to, but there's a, there's a differential in each one of the positions. If you look at the difference, uh, the difference between the median for each position, it can range anywhere between fifteen and creeps, you know, it just depends, it's just how our situation has been paid, how the, how the rules have been paid and what that beginning is. So, you know, if that's one, one factor. The second factor is that Joe, uh, former city manager Joe and I had a discussion about this before I left and this was a path that he felt and I and I supported. before I left, and this was a path that he felt and I, and I supported. Was, was a good approach. Uh, and the third, the third thing is that I can, I can tell you that the city can afford it. Right? I can tell you how you're going to pay for it, which I mentioned in the staff report. And then I guess the fourth thing is that, you know, the study, we had a $25,000 agreement to do this study was long overdue. And I think it would be, uh, to, to, to take any step less would may not be honoring this, this investment made in history. So I felt that that was a fair approach, but of course, that's just my recommendation and the council can adjust the doubt.
And do you have any recommendation about when the next step would be? Have you thought that far?
I have. So again, I think budget discussions are when we really do these deep dives. So, you know, the, the first step would be to, to, to approve something tonight in honor and, and the report and the classification plan. With the, as, as I mentioned in the draft, pushing at the top, recommendation. And the following steps to implement this plan would occur, or any kind of phased approach to salary adjustments would occur during the budget year. Because, you know, the reality is we need to be able to afford it. We're not going to put ourselves in a situation that's unsustainable. And we do know of some various funding sources that are going to be coming up in the near future. We've got some properties being developed. So there'd be additional properties, taxes as a result of some pretty large scale Trinidad developments occurring in the next year to two years. And there's some other X factors too, that we can really do a deep dive in each budget session in May, knowing what we can expect to anticipate affording through some of the offsets and grant payroll and various other methods. But yes, during the budget year, that's a time to approach this. And the phased in approach would be, you know, X amount now as proposed. And then with each budget year, the difference.
Another question. If, if we're going to, if we do vote this in tonight for the 10% step up and then we wouldn't look at it again until next May, June, somewhere in there, is that right?
That's correct.
Do you have any sense of how the staff is going to feel when they take a look at this report and, and see in black and white that they are underpaid and sometimes significantly? What do you anticipate or how does that going to be brought?
Well, that's a good question. I, I don't think anyone would want to work for an organization that's not financially solvent. So I think that we're a small enough staff, we've had these discussions on scenes. And I think that the next step, as, as indicated in this report, is that I need to actually have a conversation with each employee next, you know, to make sure that they, you know, that, that the job descriptions reflect their input. So there's no surprises there, but I also have to make sure that they're, they connect with these job descriptions that are now going to be there. So as far as the underpaid, I don't believe, I should pull that up, to see which positions were maybe more underpaid than others, maybe in the 30%.
Yeah, I think the city manager position is the most.
Well, assistant city manager. I think, I'll pull, I'll pull it up right now. Um, and then I can tell you exactly what I think might be the forecast of that. Down to eleven, I think, or twelve, the compensation study. There it is. It's assistant city manager, so I don't have to really worry about that one. And the special program manager, uh, which I believe is someone who's also been following this pretty closely. So the rest of them are water treatment. I think water treatment, most of the guys in the water department know that this study is going to change their trajectory. So I'm, I'm confident that they're in this one.
So happy.
I'll answer your question.
My question is, what do you think will be the feeling when somebody, staff takes a look at this and hears that it's a 10% for a year? In some cases, that would be pretty strong pickings. And I'm not trying to spend the city's money. I'm just wondering about the feelings.
Well, I think, I think if there's a, if we can articulate a clear phased approach, which, I mean, just to give you an example, like this, this, the immediate decision tonight would affect a 10% increase across the board, for instance. So if you're at the 15.6% underpaid from median, getting to that remaining 5.6%, let's just say if we did a 5% increase or more per employee starting next July, that's part of the analysis that we're going to have to deep dive into. But having a plan is better than having, than not having a plan. And I think for employees that have been here, that have been following along with this process, I, I, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they're probably going to be happy to know that there is a process because prior to this, there wasn't. It was very, it was pretty early.
So just that.
Yeah. There's accountability in this plan. And then I can use this to communicate or, or a city manager or finance staff of the city can use this every year to make, you know, wise and sustainable decisions for the city moving forward. But we also have to consider our revenues, you know? So, so, you know, making promises that the city can't keep is not in anyone's best interest.
No, you make a good point that it, it's a good faith document. It should be encouraging, even if it is smaller than one might wish.
I, you know, like I said, if I, if I could imagine all the conversations that I've had with the staff, that I think this, this step right here is heavily anticipated.
Other comments or questions from the council?
Well, I, I've got a number of things, but I just want to make sure that Ms. Howard is, you know, I'd like to allow her to finish first before I get into my questions, which go more to the actual job descriptions.
Okay. Ms. Howard, we're turning it back over to you for further comment?
Okay. Well, I've, I've gone through most of the, the items that, that I was going to talk about. Just based on your conversation, I, you know, as, as someone who's done class studies and comp studies, really all over California and even outside of California now, while working for RGS, I will tell you a 10% increase is a very generous increase. Many, many agencies are not able to do that or choose not to do that, that much of an increase. So I think that is, it's a really good, good faith effort on, uh, you know, to, to recommend that 10%. Um, I think it does show that, that the city is serious about getting people to market. I think people understand the fiscal constraints of any government agency, especially if you work in it. I mean, you know that. So I just wanted to make that comment. I would say that there, there are a lot of ways to do a phased approach. It can be a certain percentage every, you know, depending on, like, if it's every budget year. It could be, I've worked with the agencies who have said, well, what we'll do, and you know, this is a little bit more math, but it's, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to get everybody so they're halfway to the market. Well, that percentage is going to be different for each classification, depending how far away you are from the market. So that way, people that are further away from the market get more of an increase. And some people look at that as more equitable than everybody getting a straight across percentage. Some just do a percentage. And then as you get to the median for some classes, obviously the next phase, you can give, you, you might be able to give more to get people to the, to where they need to be. Cause you're not giving every classification money anymore. So, you know, I will leave that to Gabe and, and your financial people. But many, many agencies take a phased approach because, you know, to, to even do a 10% increase is, is a pretty, can have quite a fiscal burden on, on an agency. So I would say that. I think the only other thing I would recommend, and we recommended it in the report, is that the city consider creating a, or approving a compensation policy, something in writing that says how, how you're going to set your salaries, perhaps how often you're going to do a salary, so you know, a compensation survey, the agencies that are going to be included. If it's not comfortable to be super definitive, it might be, we're going to do a periodic, you know, uh, compensation study. And, you know, decide, does the median work for you? Do you think the mean would be a better, um, uh, data point to use? Those kind of things so that when you all and all of the employees of Trinidad win that big Lotto one day and there are new people, they'll have a foundation and they'll have kind of the blueprint to do this again when you need to do it. So that would, that's my, my other plug for compensation. So. So with that, I'll, I'll take any other questions that you have about the classifications or anything else.
Okay. Bryce, you're up.
Okay. I, um, I read through the, uh, the job descriptions and I made some notes. And I'm starting at page 162. Um, and this is for the, well, first of all, Gabe, give us, give us a recap. Who does what and what their jobs involve, so that we all have a baseline for each thing.
So, let's see, starting, starting with me. I'm the city clerk, assistant city manager now interim. And my job description was adopted by month was?
Second of July, I think.
August, September.
Okay.
September. Um, or was it? No. It was recently, I think it was, maybe it was July. And that was knowing that Joe was going to retire and, and we wanted to have the succession adopted in advance. And that this job description for assistant city manager was also developed as part of this process. We just pulled from it and moved it to the front of the line, knowing that he was leaving. Um, then we have, we have Anton, who is currently our administrator assistant to the city. Uh, let's see, and he pretty much runs town hall on a day-to-day basis, the business of the day-to-day service of the city. Angela Cather is currently our grant administrator. And doing more. And now in the absence of our city manager and the work being distributed, she's, you know, we're all, we're all adapting currently. But these are current, these, these are, and then we have, Kyle Shipman, who is currently our public works supervisor. And Derek Shadle, Carl Anderson, and Saget Brown, they're all public works in water department, water treatment specialists. They're T2 or they are certified with a T2 or going to be a T2 operator, operators in public work. So as they're defined in this new classification process, the treatment plan operator, public work specialist. So we're kind of combining those titles because anyone with a specifically independent water title will now be certified in the distribution system as well and required to be able to understand how the distribution system works, not only the water treatment process. So there are a few changes being recommended in this plan. And for instance, uh, you know, Kyle will be not just a public works employee, he will be a supervisor. He's got the most senior level experience in public works and he'll be supervising the day-to-day function of any public works. And that too is important because right now when we do our job evaluations, there isn't anyone on paper that is technically a public work supervisor. So he, he does that casually. I've been doing it casually until I had this title, assistant city manager for some of the administrative staff.
And that's separate from the water plant operator, which would be
Yes.
another position and the special projects manager.
Yes.
Special projects is open.
Special projects. Exactly.
There's a point of special. No, a special projects role at this time.
And, and again, these, these positions that were created in this document were intended for current employees, for instance. So I'll just, you know, Angela Cather, special projects. And then we hire a new grant coordinator. Prior to, prior to this, adopting this plan, we have, we had an empty grant director position, and that was Becky Price Hall, who retired this summer. And Angela was working as a grant coordinator. So now she's kind of left in this grant coordinator title without a director. So moving her into the special projects position would then elevate her responsibilities. She would get overseeing grants, which we do need, a, a person in that capacity. And that was also a plan adopted by the council in March. Which we just haven't implemented yet because we've been waiting for this document. So we had the literature to publicize that was in sync with what was coming, which has been discussed tonight. We didn't want to, you know, hire somebody back in July or August without this being announced.
Okay. Thanks. So getting into the specific relative to the minister of assistance, page 162, I see that one of his, um, jobs is, or one of the things he'll do is resolve citizens' concerns and complaints. I'm wondering if we should qualify that in consultation with the city manager or the assistant city manager. Cause it seems like a lot to put on the administrative assistant. You, you solve all the problems that people bring in, you know, to the city. So I think we should, you know.
Take that, yeah, I'll take that as in, but that, that sounds.
Yeah, because. Those can be, those are going to be bigger challenges that people higher up have to weigh in on.
Some works with management to.
Resolve.
Resolve, essentially.
Yeah. So that's one thing I think we.
Receives and distributes, something to that effect.
Well, he's definitely going to receive it.
Oh, yeah.
That's for sure. Say that he's going to resolve all. And then at page 164, it's also charged at the top to draft resolutions and ordinances. I saw that, I thought, wow, that's a big responsibility for administrative assistant. Also, but then I see that, um, and also ensure laws and codes, so forth. And, yeah, once again, in consultation with assistant city manager or the city manager, has the authority to consult with the city attorney, make sure that we're getting, you know, the right interpretations put out there to the public.
As needed.
Right. And in consultation with people higher up.
Yeah. And all those get approved by the city manager and council.
Yeah.
So what I think was this trying to say that the person would, would just like take, draft, literally draft them for.
Yeah.
Like literally, yeah. Okay.
So if you kind of see that, um, that the assistant city manager, page 167, actually, you know, composed a resolution.
Yes.
In the language.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Then at 169, I see that the grants coordinator is what says supervised by the assistant to the city manager. But I think that should, that should be assistant city manager because we've limited the assistant to city manager. You know, at one time we were going to have both, and I was wondering if you're needing so many assistants, but that's just a hypothetical case.
I can forget.
Actually, that would, I think, Gabe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, um, the, the title. That the title, instead of assistant to the city manager, that's the special projects manager. So I think the, the thought was that the grant coordinator would report to the special projects manager. Because the special projects manager has oversight over all of the, the grants, along with the, the other things that they do.
And I still have a problem fundamentally with the titles that I'll just log again, that um, that I think could cause confusion. That you have an assistant city manager and then a, and then an assistant to the city manager, right? So where you have, we next the.
Next it.
There's no more assistant.
Assistant.
Yeah, the position that was the assistant to the city manager is now the special projects manager.
Great, okay.
We just, yeah, we just, we didn't catch this um, in the grants coordinator, it should say. Reports and receives supervision from the special projects manager or designate and then exercises no supervision over staff.
Yes.
I'm sure will, you know, be a good resource for people downstream. To get things clarified.
Absolutely, thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah, and at page one seventy-two. Also says, special projects person. Plans develops. And develops the goals and objectives of the city manager office. Seems to me like the city manager should be doing that. You know what I mean?
So there's one, one seventy-two, it's the second bullet.
Suck it up, the special projects person.
Uh, yeah.
Get to the page.
Well, you could argue that the policies, goals and objectives and priorities come from the city council.
But they, but they go through the city manager, I think.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Seems to me he's, he or she has got to have higher status than the project, special projects board here.
Yeah, because this is basically saying that the special projects manager is giving direction to the city manager, whereas I think what Bryce is saying is it's the other way around.
Right.
If the other councils want to feel free to weigh in.
I, I thought I did.
Um, so what Bryce is basically saying is that. This example of duties for special project managers says that, says that they plan, develop and implement the policies, goals, objectives and priorities. Of the city manager's office and what we're saying is it's the other way around. The city manager establishes of priorities. And the special projects person would help execute.
So leaving, so for clarification, just leaving out plans and develops and just saying implements the policies, goals, objectives.
I think what we were looking at is that the special projects manager would be part of the. Kind of management team of the, of the city manager's office, so there'd be the city manager, assistant and special projects manager. If you look in the assistant city manager, it has the same duty, so it's kind of a, that group effort kind of thing to, to implement those. And plan them out and assist with that, but, but if that's. We want to make sure that it reads the way it should, so if that, our intent isn't coming through.
Maybe assists in the plan, you know, development. Assists in plan development and implements the policy, blah, blah, blah. So assists in the development of plans.
Assist, but.
Versus, yeah, so that makes sense, Gabe.
Assist.
And then implements blah, blah, da, da, da.
So I would ask you, in the assistant city manager, would you want that same language? Because like I say, the assistant city manager, it reads exactly like this. Would the assistant city manager also assist?
Uh, the answer is, the city manager has got to be the top person.
Right.
Tardos, you know.
Setting the priorities.
Right.
With the city council.
And then the high, the, the other high-level managers assisting that. Assist that person with the, those functions, got it.
Yeah, it also occurs to me, we may be able to. By consistency, by consolidating. Projects coordinator with the grant coordinator. We really need two positions for that. Angela is already knows how to be the grants coordinator. Taking on additional responsibilities as the project manager, but. Seems like there's a fair amount of overlap. Positions. Based on the descriptions.
I have thought of the uh special projects manager as being more like a program manager. So someone who, for example, does the, the septic program overall. And, you know, comes up with the marketing around it and executes it and, and then follows through to make sure that people adhere to the. To the program guidelines. So I think of that as being kind of a different role than, than Angela's. Um, I think the handoffs and the handshakes have to be clear between the two roles. Um, and I, I'm sure the staff has other examples of kind of programs. Um. At some point, like I see the grants person handing off things, like once the funding is acquired. Then the projects manager takes the lead and, and executes the project. Think that's how it works, but, you know, Angela or Gabe can weigh in.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, you know, this, this is in the um, in the interest of, you know, being fiscal responsible. Right, we're, we're so fortunate that we are in the financial sheet here in Trinidad and I really, I'm not. Escape assessment that we can afford to do this. But um, we never know what tomorrow's gonna be. And wanna have a system that's sustainable. The audit points out that near Trinidad is somewhat vulnerable in that we depend heavily on the tourism industry. Or general fund revenue. And if there was ever a significant decrease. In tourist activity, it would affect both the sales tax and the T O T revenue. You could really have to step back and, you know, evaluate situation. I don't really think that's gonna happen in foreseeable future. Possible. Anyway, I just, some, some to think about for future possible consolidation.
Just to interject for a moment, now we are keeping the special projects and the position for grants, which is it.
At this point, the other end of this.
Yeah, Angela will be sort of doing both for the time being, but the idea is we're going to hire a grants person.
Well, yes, that's what was budgeted this year. Um. But I can attest that there's times where we have to consolidate our duties, right? And currently, that's what she's doing. She's doing the grant job and she's also picking up extra assignments. You know, I, I would, I would say that it's, uh, we have to be careful about that, you know, how sustainable that is for, for the long haul. But that is um. You know, what Councilmember Kenny is re, is, is referencing is basically the fiscal prudence that we need to be able to demonstrate. During our budget processes, uh, with an understanding of what our grant revenue or grant payroll injection is going to be for the year, based on. Um, you know, the past where, you know, one given time, I think, what, two years ago, we had. Five million dollars worth of grant money rolling through the city and we would have never wanted to. Put all that responsibility on one person, you know, because there's, the, the consequences are just too great for, for not following the grant. Guidelines and, and the financial duties associated, so. There will be times where we may have to be more prudent than others and that also depends on our grant forecast. Our grant forecast and our grand needs and also the, the demands of our council. From time to time, really wanting the city to pursue grant funding for projects will. Create a, a need for maybe more grant-heavy staffing than others. So right now, we're running really lean. Um, and I believe that back in May and June, when the budget was forecasted for the year, we had envisioned. Hiring a grant coordinator because Becky Price Hall, our grant director, was exiting, so. That is on your staff to make you very well aware on what is fiscally prudent.
Yeah, I mean, I think the rest would be putting too much of a um workload on a grants coordinator. Could mean that we don't get the revenue to fund the positions and so the grant coordinator. Traditionally has paid for not only their job, but other jobs, you know, which is what I was referring to earlier about the, like, kind of potentially the long-term. Rest. So if we have them doing too many special projects, I, my concern would be that they wouldn't be able to do the really important work of getting more money for the city. And so in terms of fiscal responsibility, I think keeping that emphasis on grants is important. And, but at the same time, the reason I like the special project manager, maybe it's a part-time job, I don't know yet. I mean, that's up to, to you, Gabe, but. To a large extent, but um. I, you know, I think about the septic program, right? It's a great example of a program that if somebody really needs to manage because. You know, before we had that, we had sewage running down on the beach and that's, you know. So there's some really severe impacts on some of these if we don't have a good project manager. Um. You know, just things like even renovating the town hall, somebody, a project manager could take that over and free up your time and. There's a whole bunch of those kind of discrete projects, so maybe it's part-time, not full-time, I don't know. Um, that would be something to consider that might help address um Bryce's concerns. Uh, but I definitely want to keep grants of the, I would opt for keeping grants of the big campuses.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, so on the public work side, um. Yeah, the consultant right now, it's he's. Called T P O.
These are contract.
C P O.
T P O, T uh, uh. Chief Plan Operator. T three con, uh, contract employee currently serving the city at, I think it's four thousand dollars a month. Flat rate and that was what, uh, four or five, I forgot, it's not on that, but, uh. That was post Coleman Engineering, Sandville Engineering. Um, we found this individual and. Again, the succession plan that we've got in place is that we retain those services through in-house employees, not outside. Your stocks.
So is that what Carl's moving on to?
Yes, he's currently certified, he's currently a T three tested operator.
Yeah.
He just needs to have served, just like any profession, enough hours under a C, a T three operator to. Be signed off and then have that certified with the state. He's, I want to say it's an eighteen hundred hour program. And he's at about fifteen hundred hours, so we were hoping that by the end of this calendar year, he would have that sense.
Yeah. So, okay, well, you know, just in general, I would, I would comment also that. Well, I understand that we have to look at, um, you know, other agencies and what they pay. Uh, because there's really not much else you can do. The fact remains that Trinidad is very unique in, in the bigger picture of cities, because we're one of the smallest cities in California. Uh, so. Uh, you know, looking at and regen our KDA, what city manager makes there, for example. I mean, we only had like one square mile territory, what, three hundred and fifty citizens we got to deal with, so. You know, I think. There's a good argument that could be made that, you know, we should still lower, you know, for that reason, even though technically. Both have same amateurs and so forth, just the scale are so different here in Trinidad.
Yeah, I was curious about that. I thought maybe Ms. Howard had a, could, could kind of help us understand, because it is something that. Um, in the past, we've made comparisons to other small cities in California and in this case, we looked at local. But, but to Bryce's point, um, yeah, Arcade is much larger and much more complicated as it's your request, so.
Yeah.
Um.
And then uh. A point, uh, as far as, you know, okay, our people may be a little underpaid compared to, you know, some other places, but there's, I think. A quality of life quotient that, that they enjoy here, just like me who live here. You know, here, on your lunch break, you can go down, sit, sit down by the. The old White House and take in like a world-class, you know, the people save all year to come on vacation to come. You know, spend a little time looking at this and, you know, so that's a little bit of something that, you know. Capital balances the fact that, okay, the hard cash compensation may, may not be what is the same, but there are other factors. You know, Trinidad employee, you know, this desirable thing, you know, understandably.
Yeah, Bryce, that's a good point. Um, I, I had mona council with an, a Fortuna representative and they ran out of cash and they couldn't. Afford to give the raises to their valued employees and um, when they were, they were just couldn't, they wanted to. Like what we're doing, but they just, their budget wouldn't allow it, so they came up with the four-day work week, so everyone worked four nines and. At first it was, you know, people didn't really like it because of maybe. Eh, but now everyone, they won't want to give it up, like they're just loving this four-day work week. I don't know how we could ever incorporate that, obviously, because, you know, we, we meet people in the office every day, but maybe. Um, maybe that's an opportunity for certain people that could get off for four days a week. So we don't have to pay them more, but we give more compensation in quality of life.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a good point and, yeah, everybody values things different. Some people value their time more than money, other people, you know, really need, have certain financial needs, they gotta. Get every hour they can, you know, working. That's just a, I don't know, different approach to life.
Right, um, I have, you know, I, in my past, I, I worked for an agency that's not, not in your boat, but um. Due to fiscal constraints, the reality was that with the. With the agencies that were considered our comparable agencies, we were never gonna pay that much money. We just weren't. I mean, it just, that was the fiscal reality and so it was determined that. Um, if our salaries, instead of being like within five percent plus minus. They, they did a recommendation that, look, if we can be ten percent. Within ten percent of the median, we're calling it good, because that's what we can do and we, we kind of take what we can, you know, that's just. And we'll, you know, um, whatever consequences come with that, that's what we'll do. Um. I've had other agencies and what you might want to consider is doing a survey of employees about maybe the benefits or um. Things that you could do to, that aren't, don't really have a dollar amount next to them, that, that could enhance. The employment experience and that, because you're right, everybody has a different motivation for work. And I'll say, unless you're, you're really, really struggling financially, money usually isn't it. You know, there are a lot of things that people want out of their work that don't really have anything to do with money. Um, so there may be other creative things that can be done, either to the benefits package or within policies, like you say. Do a nine eighty schedule maybe or a four ten schedule, maybe people want more time off as opposed to, you know, um, more money. Uh, so those are some other things that, that you may want to consider. Um, and, and the reality is you, Trinidad is very unique and so um, it may be that. Because of some of the other factors, that it is okay for you not to be right at the median of all of these larger. Larger agencies, so. It's, you know.
Yeah, one thing I think of too is when we go out to recruit, though, we do have that point, right? We do have. Um, we're recruiting and, and we have competition and the competition are generally of those other cities that we just described. So that was, um, but I think if the council, okay, I'd like to open up the public phone.
And I just one man did before.
Yes.
I'd steal that term from Richard Johnson, he likes to.
Yeah.
Um, page twenty-eighty, I think there's a. Page twenty eight, I think there's a typo because there's three room, there's, it looks like it's intended to say room number one, two, and three, but it says room number one, two, and two.
I see one, two, and three, which were are you?
Page one eighty.
Page one eighty. Okay. So we have the treatment plan operator, one, two, and three. Maybe it was a typo on just your.
Let's see. One, two, three.
I see one, two, and two.
You see, you see. I'm not crazy after all. See, I knew it.
I can show you.
Because I'm a straight up public works specialist.
I thought you were going to TPO. So the TPO.
No, it's like a
I don't have the same uh packet as you.
I'm looking at the app.
Public land operator, one, two, two, public work specialist, top of the page.
So shouldn't have you want to go through.
I believe so, yeah. There's TPO one, there's.
I see it. Yeah, I said the top of the same.
One, two, and two, one, two, and two.
Yeah, it's just like I have at the top of the page. One, two, you're good.
So can you, excuse me, can you tell me what page of the job description it is? Like, is it page two of, two of five, three of five?
One, it's Patty, it's one of five.
Oh, okay.
Treatment plan operator, public works specialist, job description.
Oh, I said, gosh, it's right in front of my face. Okay. Yes.
All right, are we ready to helicopter up?
Sure.
We're in a helicopter and we are going to move to public comments. Are the public comments that the compensation study? And I see Ms. Thompson moving towards the podium. Please go ahead.
I think that we should give a ten percent increase right away to all the employees. Just from living here for six years and just I've lived a lot of places. Humble County is one of the most expensive places to live. Uh, gas is one of the highest in California. The food here is more expensive than other areas. We also want to retain our staff. We have this amazing staff, as you well know, we want to retain our, our people here. And as the mayor said, we also, if we have to recruit someone, we want to have it, you know, compensate people to attract people and the bright people here too. Most, it seems like most of our people are young people. And when I was younger, it was about the money. Of course, I want to live, you know, live in a nice place, but I need the money too. You start your career. You have to, you know, build your family, you have to buy a house. So I feel like it's really about the money and 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 retaining people and we know that they wear different hats all the time, you know, and they, if something happens, they're they're right there to take care of the emergency. So I hope we give them that ten percent that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comments? Okay, I don't see any other hands raised online and there were none in the room, so. I am. I would be willing to make an emotion, a motion on this to adopt the twenty twenty five job classification plan and compensation policy prepared by RGS and authorize a budget amendment to cover a ten percent salary increase effective immediately. As the first step in aligning salaries to the median rates identified in the plan and prepare a phased strategy proposal. And to consider a phased strategy proposal which might reach full alignment beginning July first, twenty twenty six. And I've, I've changed the wording a little bit from what was in the staff report. And my, the spirit of that change, I hope I said it right, but the spirit is that I think I'm okay with the ten percent across the board, but would like the council to vote again for subsequent increases, rather than an assumption that we're going to get to full alignment. In other words, we might not get to the full median for the reasons that we all just discussed and for fiscal reasons. But, you know, like I, I personally could see committing to ten percent now and then revisiting it later in the budget discussions, if that makes sense.
I think that's a wise approach. I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously and congratulations to staff on your increase and thank you for due diligence. And also, I want to thank Ms. Howard for joining us tonight and sharing her insights on this study. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well, I just want to say it was a pleasure working with your staff, Gabe, Joe, everybody. It was, it really was a pleasure and I'm, I'm going to get up there one of these days. So anyway, let's stop by City Hall and see the new paint job. Anyway, so you all have a great evening and thank you so much.
Thanks for joining us. All right, team, we are on the November council meeting schedule. I think there is a proposal to maybe move our November meeting to a different date. So this should be a pretty short topic and then we'll continue on our agenda.
Yes. We flipped the page to November after we flipped the page to October and we realized that Tuesday, November eleventh, which is our regularly scheduled meeting date, happens to fall on better this day this year. So with that said, we thought it would be a good idea to ask what may your pleasure be for some alternative dates? And we didn't want to make any assumptions without your approval. I just threw out Wednesday, November twelfth, the following day, along with Tuesday, November eighteenth. You know, anything after that, we get into the Thanksgiving holiday break and that's probably not for long. So it could potentially be earlier as well. I believe that Monday, the the tenth, but typically Mondays are not good for meeting days because we don't have public, you know, a chance oftentimes to review. Yeah.
I'm making that motion.
Uh, any public comments, any issues with us doing the meeting on the twelfth of November instead of the eleventh? All right, back to your motion, Bryce.
It's a November, I'm leaving day, Wednesday, which was instead the usual Tuesday. Legal holiday.
Yes, and Jack has seconded all those in favor. Okay, so moved. And if you guys wouldn't mind, maybe next month, we can set an agenda item to discuss the December meeting. Because I might want to change that date or have the discussion around that. I'll explain later. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we're good for November twelfth. Everybody mark your calendars. And now we are ready to move on. Uh, thank you for those of you who have been patient. Our next topic is regarding a city council vacancy appointment. And we have two potential candidates here tonight who have been patient with our our discussions. And so I'll turn it over to our city manager to kind of lead us into this and move up from there.
Okay, thank you again. I in our, the submarine tonight that we're looking to achieve is to interview and fill the vacancy by appointment to serve remaining on your term through November twenty twenty six with one of two applicants that we've been lucky enough to receive letter, letters of interest from. And let's see, I want to if the council chooses tonight to make an appointment and we will swear that new member in at the beginning of the next meeting. So a little background, the city accepted a letter of reservation from former member Carrie Verella on September ninth and authorized staff to begin a recruitment. Miss Verella was selected in November twenty twenty four and will have served eight months and four, eight months of a four year term upon acceptance of her resignation. So the city must actively seek a replacement for the remainder of her term through twenty twenty eight with an asterisk. A successful candidate will be able to serve until the next general election, which is in November twenty twenty six. If they wish to continue beyond that date and serve the full term, they will have to complete the nomination process next summer, which occurs between July and August, to have their name appear on the ballot in November twenty twenty six. It would be a contest. Anyone from the public would be able to apply for that seat for the remaining two years. So the current council members' terms are Mayor Kelly expires in twenty twenty six, twelve twenty twenty six, December, Breckenridge twenty twenty six. Current term is vacant and it will be subject to a twenty twenty six vote. So we have four seats potentially on next year's ballot. Uh, and Councilmember Kenny, whose term expires in twenty twenty eight. So basic eligibility, eligibility requirements preserving on the council, must be a resident of the city of Trinidad, registered voter inside the city limits. And in case of yes, and there must be a majority of vote of the council, obviously, to appoint to this position. Uh, one government code or election code requirement states that the city must fill this term within sixty days of the resignation. Right now, we're halfway through that period. But for whatever reason, one of the two letters of interest that you have received, if you decide you want to extend that period, you're welcome to do it. You'll have to make an appointment by the next meeting. Without, with that said, we've got two candidates who filed letters of interest, John Waskowitz. Well, I had the pleasure of speaking with him a few times and Mr. Andrew Davis, who we've have been familiarized with, with his participation in meetings and public service over the last, this maybe year. And I will turn this over to the council. You are welcome to ask them to introduce themselves. You're, you're welcome to ask any specific questions. There's no format that you're required to abide by and it's, it's all yours.
Well, if I may, I would like to ask both John and Andrew to introduce themselves and I was thinking we'd go in order, John submitted his uh, application, if you will, first and maybe have John say, come up to the podium if you're comfortable or whatever you're comfortable with and just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested and then maybe have Andrew do the same. And if you don't mind, the council can, if you're comfortable with that, and then the council can maybe shoot you guys some questions that's appropriate. Thank you.
Well, pleasant good evening, council members and everyone else and attendants tonight. My name is John Waskowitz and I know this has been a long day for everybody here, so I will keep my comments short and to the point. And I know Andrew wants to speak as well, so. You know, I live here with my significant other, Gloria Spiegel, and our three year old German shepherd, and we live over on Underwood, which is on the northwest end of the city limits of Trinidad. We've been here about seven years now and we kind of are refugees from the inland side of the state where the wildland fire situation became tenuous for us. So we wanted to find a nice, safe, secure, healthy environment. And Trinidad certainly meets all the worst requirements. I would have to say that a large part of this is due to the efforts put forth by the city council there. Please accept my gratitude for all the hard work and and stamina and grit that new people put into making these hard decisions every month. And like most other people here in Trinidad, I think I have the same feeling that this is a safe, secure and healthy environment. And I think we'd like to keep it like that for long term. So I'm here at the behest of a few neighbors and friends that suggested that perhaps I talk to the city council about filling Carrie's vacancy. And so I got to thinking about this since I retired. I haven't really been doing a whole lot of anything. I did have one memorable event when I walked, I walked the, across the Iberian Peninsula of Spain, Portugal. There's a pilgrimage trail called the Camino, the Camino Santiago. So I took a month out of my retirement and did that. And I have to tell you, if you ever have the opportunity to do that, please, it's one of those memorable events that you often hearken back to. And you think about, you know, the people that you met on that and the stamina that it took to complete that trip. Hundreds of miles. Not to get back to where I was here. So before I retired, I was an airline pilot for American Airlines and I got a chance to fly out into all those faraway exotic places that you see in the travel guide brochures. And before that, I was a pilot in the United States Marine Corps and I got to travel to some of the not so desirable places in the world where you wouldn't drink the water out of the tap. And people there were, did not have a safe, secure and healthy environment that they were living in. Sometimes they were fleeing to the homeland to other places just to get away from those types of onerous situations. Before that, I was a student in university and I was able to couple together enough units and grade point average to get a degree in environmental resources management and move on down the road. But over the course of the last few decades, I have had the opportunity to be part of other councils and and boards. And I'll just talk about two of them here real quickly and then I'll hand it over to Andrew. I was on the county board, which was for a resource conservation district. The resource conservation district is essentially a a conduit between the federal government and rural landowners for dealing with water quality issues, wildland fire suppression strategies, basic plants and a host of other things, but probably one of the introductions that I was able to make in this on this board was to the public land trust, the idea of public land trust and private entities. Those are two things that I was not very familiar with. But working with the RCD, I kind of was introduced to that whole concept and I thought that was pretty important. And the other board that I was part of was fire protection district, was an eighty six thousand acre fire protection district. And then this small volunteer fire department was responsible for, in, in conjunction with the, with Cal Fire, they had their areas of responsibility. But started out as a volunteer fireman, but I realized that, you know, fighting fires in the summer in a full protection year was really more a job for a young person. So when the first job came available for the first opening on their board came available, I moved from volunteer firefighter to the volunteer to the fire protection district board of directors. And I eventually became chairperson for that and I you know, and it was really a one of those jobs where we brought a lot of young men and women into the volunteer force to train them to be firefighters and emergency medical, first aid responders and and swift water rescue people as well. We had a river that ran right down the middle of our fire district. And they often got trained, you know, from the volunteer fire units to go and move on to Cal Fire and, you know, become responsible firefighters and have a good jobs and so that was kind of, I felt kind of that was a fruitful position for a lot of those young guys and girls. Uh, so anyhow, unless you have any questions for me, that's about all I have. And thanks once again for all the good work you guys do here. It's Katie.
Uh, just a question. Is there anything that you can put your finger on that you would, if you were on the council, you'd like to pursue to see improve or change or?
Well, you know, I know there's a host of issues that you're dealing with right now and based on my experience, you know, I have some, I have anything that's kind of resource related. You know, I can probably sit on those two types of committees that would be of some assistance to the, to the city council. I mean, specific items to a change, I can't think of off the top of my head. Any specific items to change? I can't think of off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Thanks. Andrew, do you want to? Come up and talk to us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the city council?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, thanks for your time and consideration. Um, just a little background about myself. I grew up in a small town, not the small, but a very, uh, slightly larger town, but still very similar. Uh, environment, politics and things. Um, my parents served, uh, in various capacities in leadership. Of the town and, uh, it's just something that kind of rubbed off on me and I've always been interested in governance and that sort of thing. Having an opportunity here to join in. Help out would be, uh, be, would be part of kind of just a continuation of the lifelong, uh, interests. Um, in terms of my kind of professional experience, um, I have background in finance and accounting. Um, and better part of twenty years in various roles and that kind of career with, but, uh, I think that. Is one of the key areas I kind of look at here in the town is just making sure that this thing kind of keeps turning over. Um, and I think I can bring some. Uh, expertise in that area that, that would be helpful to the, to the council members. Um, I, I don't know if you've had a chance to read, uh, the letter I wrote, um. And I just kind of wanted to hit a couple of points in there. Um, I do think that, um, you know, sort of change is inevitable and I know that's a hard thing in this town. And I understand why it's hard and I oftentimes agree with it being hard. Um, but I also think there's smart solutions that can, you know. Achieve what we need to achieve while still kind of keeping the character and the coastal nature of the town, which I think is a, does a solid. Um, in terms of the work of the council and the work of kind of the government, it turned out I've spent the better part of last year. Uh, both attending city council meetings and also, um. Presiding animal advisory committee, um, and heavily gotten pat on my hands on a little bit already in terms of, in terms of what it's all about. So, um, I'm, you know, understand that there's, it's, it's more work than it looks like. I think from the outside, uh, I understand that. I understand the, you know, kind of the gravity with the decisions that are made, um. Oftentimes, uh, you're having a choice between two groups of people in town and one different thing is finally, so I, I'm ready to answer.
Yeah, questions?
I, I'd like to ask you the same question, uh, is there anything in? In Trinidad that you can put your finger on that, if, if you were on the council, you'd want to improve, change?
I could probably speak to two things. I think one, um, I'm. Well, I'll, I'll speak a couple of things. One, I think in terms of improvement, um. You know, I, with my background in, in finance and counting, I, there's some fiscal transparency that I think we could improve upon. I was very, uh. Applauded the budget process as I sat through that this year. I thought that was quite excellent. Um. I think there's some things that could be a little better in terms of through the year, uh, kind of keeping tabs on that, um, and I don't think that. Just to clarify that even a little further, I, I would hope that those things would not be incredibly under us on city staff. And they could be developed in a way that is relatively easy to report on and give the council, um. A little better guidance on that. Um, it's no secret if anybody sends meetings, the, you know, obviously I have strong opinions about the signs on Edward Street. Not going to shy away from that. Everybody knows, we don't need to delve into that tonight. Um, I think in terms of forward-looking things that I see coming, um, I am very open-minded and I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about the Humble Bay Water. District, but I think that's a very important and, um. Sadly, discussions with the town for the future of the town, depending on which, whichever way that goes, um. Uh, but I, I'm very, uh, ha- I would happily join in that conversation. I know it's going to be a very tough decision, I think, at times. Um, and the other aspect of the talent, I think, um, is a little more on the planning commissions, uh, port, but I'm interested in is just, this is generally housing. Uh, when other state has a, um, a real preference for. Uh, improve or increase volume of housing and I think, you know. Uh, from what I am, from what I can tell, I think with the Red Moon City Council stuff, you know, we've got some very strong arguments for. Our positions and things and that's great. Uh, but I think that's going to be something that we're going to have to kind of deal with because we are also going to need to. You know, um. Didn't think about our own population and how we, we can things. You know, here. So I, those are kind of some things that I'm interested in. No strong opinion one way or the other, but I'm just.
The questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you. And I think, um, I will, um. Before we have a discussion, are there any public comments related to, uh, either John or Andrew that anyone wants to come forward and discuss? All right, okay, back to the council and, um, you know, speaking of compensation, you do get fifty dollars a month. So if you're selective, so now they're really high stakes here. So, um, with that, on that, um, brief moment of levity, um. I think what we'll do is, you know, the council can make comments and then I'll ask each of you to tell me because this is a public and transparent. Process who you would like to choose at this particular juncture. And I think the other thing I would like the candidates to know. When I, um, originally, before I was elected on the council last time, the first time, there were three of us and I was not one of the people that was selected. And I eventually ended up running and, and, well, actually I was selected and then I ran and I was elected, but, um. So it's, you know, sometimes it's a process where the timing just isn't right, but it doesn't mean that, um. You know, it doesn't mean that we don't want you to serve on the council. It's more of a timing thing and there's also an opportunity to run for office. So. I would like, you know, both of you, um, but, uh, we'll have to choose one of the nine, so. Um, with that preface, other comments or questions, or would you like to just go ahead and? Make your.
I think, I think both of you guys should be on the council. You guys would be amazing, whether tonight or in the year I'm gone. But, um. Conflict resolution is the one thing that I, is a sticking point for me, um. I. Don't attend the animal advisor committee because of a meeting that happened in April of last year where. I felt that Andrew was attacking it and it led her to resign. So that kind of is a sticking point for me.
Okay. So your, your preference would be, at their center would be John's?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Thank you for your transparency and I understand your concerns. Um, do either of you want to go?
Well, sure. I just would like to comment that, you know, we're so fortunate here in Trinidad that even though it may be declining in many places. And I think it is, but the spirit of volunteerism is still. Alive and well in Trinidad because basically that's what it is, a volunteer job. Fifty dollars a month, uh. That's what, that's what they were paying back in nineteen eighty-six when I was on my first term as a city council person. And it wasn't very much back then either, but it's, uh, it's a lot less now. So yeah, both were great candidates, I think, um. Part, particularly. Willing to get involved, so it's, uh, very tough to, uh. Take one or the other. To me, um. What, what I would consider the tiebreaker would be that, um, on a monthly basis, we always get the, um, spreadsheets. To, to go over, although I do my best to, you know, really look at it carefully and understand. It's very, it's a very daunting. Process for me and. Think it would be a valuable addition to the council to have someone with a financial background who could, um. Help us maybe improve the, uh, communication aspect of. Allowing the council to understand, um. You know, what are the, the red flags we should watch out for and that kind of stuff. And also the fact that, um, almost a year ago now, I guess, when I first put my name for that. Andrew was one of the three of us that put his name in for only two available seats. And when he heard that there were two other people, he graciously. Bowed out and said, well, you guys go ahead, I'll wait for another. No time, so my way of thinking, um. Kind of like, you know, first come, first served. Before, um, he, you know, had his oar in the water a little sooner and, uh. I, I would be inclined to, you know, also as a procedural, I think it should be a motion. Always decide things by way of motion here. It will come down to a vote of course, so.
It will. That's a good point. I thought we were supposed to each say and then, and then go with the majority. Uh, so I may be procedurally leading us in the wrong direction, Bryce.
Well.
Do you want to, do you want to?
I think it amounts to the same thing.
But I'd like to continue with the process that we have. Halfway down the river, so.
Yeah, well, it's, it's actually chair's discretion, so.
Yeah, I mean, you could, maybe, maybe let's do this, um. Why don't we continue the way we are, but don't, you don't necessarily have to vote. You can just talk about the two candidates and your. Your feelings at the moment of where you, you believe they, you know, you would, yeah. Do you follow me? Like you could say.
And then you'll have.
And then I'll make, and then we'll make a motion. So you could, if you want to make any comments about, like, if you know either of them and have experience with them and you'd like to. Share that so that the rest of the council knows, that would be appropriate, I think. Otherwise, um, we'll just go to a change, because I think you're right, Bryce.
Think I've explained my reaction for favoring one or the other, but I would like to thank them both sincerely for their willingness and. Whoever doesn't, you know, get it this time around. That two years goes by really quick for the next opportunity or gets sooner off two years.
Yeah, it's going to be sooner.
It's safe to say that anybody who lives within the city limits and wants to be on the city council, it won't be very long before he can.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there are three of us who are rolling off at the end of the term, so. Katie, did you want to make any comments about the candidates or should I go ahead and call them?
No, I, I would like to, um. Uh, it's first of all, I think that you're both excellent in the council, either one of you, and then eventually the other one of you will. Run and be on the council and the council would be the better for it. Um, and, um, I, John, I don't know you as well. Uh, but I have liked you and passing, uh, our dogs passing on the street, you're, you know, always very pleasant and cordial. And I was impressed with, uh, your credentials that you spoke of just now. I think that it would be a really good addition. Um, formerly, uh, uh, you know, I knew Andrew, uh, better, um, uh. As has been mentioned, there was a very unfortunate set-to on a committee that I was running. Uh, that became extremely unpleasant. And it had to do, um, with, uh, kind of aggressivity that I found very off-putting. For that reason, I would, uh. You know, I am swayed to prefer to vote for you, John, uh. Rather than spend my next year feeling uneasy. Uh, that there'll be another, uh, confrontation that is very unpleasant. Even though, uh, Andrew, I'm sure would bring a lot to the council, uh. With his financial expertise, and I'm sure that you would welcome help with that, Bryce, but, um. This has been a wonderful. Experience for me, being on this council, working, uh, with everyone and working with the staff and. The goal, uh, while we differ occasionally, the goal has always been to pull together as best we could. And that's been very pleasant.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. So I'll just be brief and so we can go ahead and move, uh, to a motion. I, you know. I, um, in being fully transparent, I worked with Andrew on the animal advisory committee. I'm aware of some of the conflict that occurred. And we have had subsequently some really good discussions and I in fact encouraged him to, to put his name in the hat for the city council. Um, but John, I haven't met you and I'm very intrigued by also your, uh, experience of land trust and working with tribal entities, which is. Um, a big part of what we do on the council. And I'm also mindful that we could end up with a two-two split here in the, in the vote and, um. And so I may, uh, move in a different direction and please understand, um, both of you that, um. I have the utmost respect for both of you and coming forward and, um, we will get you on the council sooner or later, as Bryce mentioned. All right. So with all that, you can tell it's very difficult because you're our neighbors and friends and, you know. We want to be respectful in this process. All right, so I am going to ask Jack to, let's start the motion because I, um, started with you and he would like to move to.
Yeah, again, this is really hard because I do like both of you guys a lot and I think both of you. Would bring a lot to this council. Andrew, I know that you would be a very strong player on this council and I. Love for you to sit next to us, but, um, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, point John.
Okay, thank you. And is there a second for John? Second, Katie? All those in favor? I'm going to throw my name in the hat to three to one. Okay, I believe that's the only motion and John, thank you for joining us on the council. Andrew, thank you. You've joined in the reindeer games as well and is helping a lot on the animal advisory committee. All right, we have the last discussion topic for tonight, which is a very good and comprehensive staff activity report. The Gabe put together. Council, I guess I'll ask, we need a three-minute stretch break or shall we go ahead and just plow ahead? All right, we're going to plow ahead if you're comfortable, Gabe, and I'll turn it over to you.
I am, thank you. Uh. You know, I put all this down on paper because I think it, uh, keeps. Accountable for your will and what the council is expecting of us. Um, you know, from a, from a bird's eye view, uh, but also down to, to the smaller granule. Items which I know, I'm guessing, um. Air Force Ten, Bryce King, appreciates. So. That said, I don't want to get too deep into reciting everything. I just want to kind of highlight a few of these things because again, it's all in the packet. It kind of gives us a day-to-day, uh, snapshot, or, or not a day-to-day, but a, a summarized snapshot of the activity. And this, our finger on the pulse for the month. Um. By category of department, starting with administration. Which I would summarize as a month dedicated to catching up and preparing for the next wave. I think, um, you know, with. We all can understand, former manager Joe Tagliavasi left the city in, in pretty good hands and, um. We're experiencing that lull now. Not saying that we don't have bigger picture items that we are not focused on because we are. But it's a really nice, uh, time to catch our breath. Handle a lot of housekeeping items, uh, for instance, finance. If we're talking the spirit of finance. We had, uh, with your action tonight on the consent agenda, it would be approved. Uh, we closed the fiscal year prior, uh, actually should say twenty twenty-four. And we're beginning now already to kick off the, uh, recent fiscal year that has passed. Uh, June thirtieth and the audit for that. We also did the, um. Annual street report. So we did an audit. We had the state controller's office. We contracted the state controller's office to audit. Every penny and every dollar that we spend of our transportation allowance, gas tax, T B A. Uh, and various funding sources that were received from council. What else? We, uh, were able to mail the. Right away application that was requested of us. Uh, in lieu of the boardwalk agreement that we had attempted to, uh, have the Trinidad branch area. Uh, approve, but they recommended that we go through a different process. We accomplished that goal. Uh, and we also have had several meetings and we believe we have a very clear path forward for the two. Residences outside the city limits upon a low-preclaimed that have requested lar service. It's a huge challenge. Um. As far as finance, again, the annual street report. the upcoming audit engagement, which will most likely begin, I think, uh, next month and on, uh, remember, with putting together the documents into last year's financial statements. Uh, Public Works has been keeping their maintain, uh, keeping and maintaining their routine of priority, uh, preparing for the winter rains. We've had a nice splash of rain. It seemed like it came a little early this year, so making sure that all the gutters, stormwater systems been inspected. Um, has been a big priority. And also, I worked closely with them to develop a system, a format for sending informal requests for estimates or from our contractors, our preferred contractors, Walensho, then in GRS, so that they can give us biz on projects, for instance, water hookups. We've got currently two water hookups being requested inside the city limits. And that's, uh, there's one on Berry Avenue and there's another one on Underwood. And, um, when the city receives an estimate, cost of that goes to the resident. The city doesn't pay for that hook up. So it's in the city's best interest and in the resident's best interest that the city does the service and justice by getting good estimates, and the estimates do range. And sometimes they range significantly. So we put together a, a, a new packet because we're anticipating up to seven more connections into next year. Five of them will come over there off of, um, the new development where there's proposed, which require five separate connections. And then also the two potentially on Hill Creek Lane. So this process, I don't think that in my entire career here, I don't think we've done more than one every five to seven years. So we're up to about nine in the next year. So we developed a system so we can get these estimates out, get their estimates back from the contractors. That was a highlight of this one. It took a lot of work. Uh, Measure Z, we bought a new streaming current monitor, and this is for the water department. And that streaming current monitor uh, will significantly improve the overall water quality and viability as it calculates and maintains optimum polymer during water treatment plant process. So the higher the turbine, the more the turbine, more the turbine, the streaming current monitor is able to determine what that part per million is and then dose the water with the proper chemicals. And I say chemicals, it's a polymer, but that polymer and chlorine work together to sanitize the water. And having this device, which was purchased, uh, with funds that we received through a grant award from Measure Z, which is taking fun. Is a valuable tool for us to have in our water treatment arsenal. Uh, let's see, the staff has been very focused on the EnerTAC project. If anyone's driven down West Haven Drive, it's the contractor's been laying a lot of pipe to connect the two, and right now the two systems have the pipeline laid along West Haven Drive to connect each system to one another. But right now, we're working on the complex part of building the technology and the hardware at our treatment to turn on and off that water in case of emergency. So that's been been a big project that's currently underway. Buffalo's creek flow, we're not too worried about that now. We have a three-point-two-two cubic foot per second, uh, read from Todd Kramer, Pacific Watershed Associates, he was on the field on ten ten twenty twenty-five, and of course, we have their Sanitaria rain this week. So the creek just continues to swell. Uh, planning, Trevor Parker and I have been uh, engaged in the Assalinger Memorial Working, uh, Trail Working Group hosted by the State Coastal Commission. And a little bit of an update is included in the staff activities report for anyone who wants a little follow-up on that. Um, engineering, uh, let's see. The highlight of this month, we're Josh Wolf, our streets and roads engineer, and I were working on, um, he proposed the improvements for what we call the twenty twenty-four STIP project. It's a surface transportation improvement fund with funds administered through Caltrans. And the city had applied for these funds several years ago. And we have developed, uh, GHD has developed plans to repay Main Street with a fresh surface and also improve the sidewalk that's on the south side of Main Street that's usually pretty narrow.
Uh.
Other side of the street has had major improvements to that sidewalk during the Safe Routes School program back in two thousand, I think it was eight, nine. Um, but the south side is is bad line of sight issues when you're walking up to the intersections of those streets because of hedges and fences. And this project is gonna aim to correct with the new surface, um, for Main Street, for part of West Haven Drive and also part of Patrick's Point Drive, a new asphalt surface with new striding and some safety enhancements, no new boltouts or anything like that. But we also learned that we will not be eligible for, uh, twenty twenty-six STIP funds because, and it's an every other year cycle, um, because the city has been receiving a lot of those funds. This project in particular, I think the estimate's around six to eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and they're scheduled for next summer, but they'll be quick. Uh, but we won't have six to eight hundred thousand dollars to play with for a good five years possibly. So we're gonna have to live with what we have here and use our, uh, general fund and other isolated and dedicated streets and roads funds to on any further improvements. Culverts that need to be replaced, alligatoring of any surfaces of streets. You know, we're gonna have to be really wise with how we use our limited amount of funds over the next five seconds. Um, bounce to future agenda topics. Future agenda topics, the the one that we, I know we've had an underground utilities uh, potential discussion underway, that one just keeps getting just a little bit out of my grasp every time I reach for it, but we do have some P G N E representatives that are prepared, and I think I could work with uh, Jack, I could talk to him directly about this, but we also could bring some of this forward in a, in a form of a report to the council, hopefully in November, maybe December, uh, to formalize it if something behind the scenes doesn't, um, produce, you know, a productive discussion. Asking for this for a while. Want to follow through with that as well.
Hey, guys, just one.
Go for it.
Um, I noticed the camera uh, for those online is is pointing at me when Gabe is talking. I don't know if you can. I just think for people online, it it will help to see your face with your, you know, the.
I wasn't even looking, but that's a really good.
I feel sorry for you after the fact, and it's just like me for an hour and a half. We don't try to be animated over here, but.
Oh, that's totally fine. I'm glad you brought that. Can't stop this.
I think everyone's are totally. I think they'll enjoy seeing your shining first profile.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for indulging me.
Yeah, and, uh, last but not least, I'll I'll touch on the future agenda topics, which I think we've all been kind of anticipating at some point, which is the Humble Bay Municipal RFP. Uh, you know, your council made a motion in July to direct staff to pursue you know, comparative analysis, feasibility study. I won't go into those details about that exact motion. But I, I'm picking up the ball on that. We've, I've been gathering information from various sources. Um, each of our staff members has identified in the staff activities report, uh, the city planner, the grant administrator, our city engineer and myself, we've all been delegated tasks to kind of go out, assemble information and then come back with, let's see, how to say it. To, to begin developing materials to support the next phase of discussion that will support carrying out a motion in the most efficient manner. So what we're learning throughout this process of gathering information is that, you know, as as much as we want to craft a motion to direct staff to do something, there are some things out there, some resources, some information that we're gathering that that might mean we need to come back to you for further guidance. And I think that was also something that was requested by our fee, is that we were to to bring that back to the council for final review and see grant money to fund. So right now, we're, we're actually going out on a hunt for, for developing our resources that are gonna help us reengage and reframe this discussion for you. I don't have an anticipated date yet, but I would. I don't, I don't know if the, you know, holidays are a good time to bring up this discussion. I think we want to do it mindfully. Maybe it is a good time to bring discussion up, but if we want to be inclusive, um, you know, I'd like to, I would like to see it wrapped up by the end of the year so we have better direction. But, um, I think this, the staff activities section of this agenda item would be the the best place to start, park some of this information so you can see how this is formulated on scenes, as opposed to just thinking that it just got lost in the shuffle, because it's definitely not lost. Uh, let's see, I touched on a couple of the grant projects, uh, underway, the EnerTAC, the per capita perks and rec, which we just sent, uh, information to the B I A as part of the right-of-way uh, permission project that we need before we could even touch that boardwalk. But I've also had some very interesting conversations with the transportation director at the Trinidad Ranch area, that there may be some funding on their end. Actually, it is their project that they are, they may be able to utilize. And then maybe free up some of this per capita funding for some other projects that we would like to do, such as the park. You know, so we're looking at some different options here, partnering with our friends Trinidad Ranch area. Town hall rot and repair window project was scheduled for the twenty ninth to thirteenth, then it was scheduled to start on the thirteenth, but now we're looking at the twentieth. And it was due to rain, due to staffing at Adams Commercial General. And I just got an email today saying that they will be here on the twentieth, their anticipated new start date. And they will have construction done within a week. So all these windows and any route prepare in this building could potentially be done within a week, because I think they really want to throw a large staff, not just, you know, two, two people.
You know, I was standing out there looking at the building, and there's a lot of rust to, I I just, I have a feeling that we should be prepared for a little bit of a potentially a budget overrun when we get to the painting part. Because there's like, you know, the gutters don't look like they're in great shape, for example, so we could, you know, you know how it is. It's like, you're just gonna paint, and then they say, you know, you're, uh, replacing the gutters and, you know, everything else, so. Anyway.
Once we dive into it, we're, yeah, you're not gonna have rust, you're not gonna want much rusty gutter for this new, new improved town hall available, right? So we'll keep that in mind. Um, so last in the staff activities, I included the, um, a staff report that Trevor Parker included, and that has some information about, uh, some of the questions that were, some of the questions, accusations and sort of fear that was brought up of the July money. Trevor's, one of Trevor's assignments was to kind of go out and and create some some, to find some answers and maybe even do a little myth busting. So there's a staff report included in this packet for that, and that, and again, all these things are gonna come back to the council at some.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Not the time for deliberate discuss.
Yeah, when we have it as an agenda item, then this will be good reference material.
Um, but we always hear about how, you know, we didn't have time to see. So I was trying to suggest, hey, let's be just really transparent about where we're going with these processes and what we're doing with the city's time, energy and money behind the scenes. And I thought it would be nice to plant these seeds, you know, in advance so that, you know, as we formulate our discussion and framework for for where we're going with the chip, this agenda item will be, uh, you know, they'll trace, trace the steps of how we created this framework. Uh, and also, there's a, a really nice, um, report done by Angela Catherine there that, uh, which was her step in this process is to, um, determine what kind of grant funding may be out there to support this RFP or comparative analysis. And she does, in fact, report on that funding sources that are available, which there's no guarantees, but, um, we are finding a path forward in that regard.
Good to hear.
Yeah. So with that said, I think I'm just gonna turn it back. If you have any questions, otherwise, uh, we'll just keep going. Right, questions?
Okay.
Uh, great report.
Yeah, wow.
Uh, this was great to learn about the water automatic, uh, polymer measuring device. Noel would be proud of this.
He would be proud.
Watching that.
Yeah, that, if that failed and we were, we were, we had a unit that was in there for about, I think I want to say it was better per, uh, ten or fifteen years old. And if that fails, it would be catastrophic for our system. So kind of this, I think it, if anyone knows anyone with a county, you know, we're supervisors, we're drawn, whoever may have supported this, uh, Measure Z, um, award. I was thanking.
Yeah.
So I have curiosity on the sidewalk, why the south side of the street? Was it the idea that the street would be a little narrower or?
Yeah, the lane width right now is currently much larger, greater than it needs to be. I think the lane width average is, um, eight feet, but then with an additional, um, right now, it's it's exceptionally wide there. So we're only talking about another foot, I believe. It's very, it's kind of minimal.
Mm-hmm.
But it makes a huge difference when you're walking with two people passing each other.
I walk that every day and every day I come into the street.
Right. Yeah, especially with the driveway interfacing, there's a couple of driveway conforms that are gonna be redeveloped to look a lot like the one down at the end of.
Where is it gonna be?
Um, the south side of Edwards, I'm sorry, no, it's the south side of Main.
Between Ocean and the corn.
Yep, the entire, the entire part of Main Street.
Holdway, Broadway.
Yeah.
So, uh, the driveway conforms are also gonna include, um, you know, drainage underneath so that, you know, water's not coming into the sidewalk as it's moving down towards our storm drain receptors. Uh, that'd be interfacing with any of that water, because it's, it's gonna be almost exactly the same as the one down here by the, uh, aside of, uh, Ben Breakfast, I think the driveway that goes up there. So, uh, these enhance, so narrow that road a little bit, but not, you may not even notice it. And then while we're doing this, this is a great opportunity to engage with the residents on that street who have, you know, wall fences, uh, hedges, to say, hey, we're, the city's making a huge investment in in the safety of the street. And we're gonna try to work together to get those hedges, things cut back.
The one that was spugging me did get cut back.
Yeah, well, that one was growing very far out, but we're talking, we're even talking about doing some, um, requesting some partnership and creating some structure, I don't know what it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like. I think you and I, Bryce, had that conversation about prior owners making arrangements with the city to cut it back, but then new owners come and then it just kind of continues to grow out, so. You walk there, I like that way a lot of times. I'll get off the street on the sidewalk and you just don't know who's gonna come out of those, you know, Ocean Avenue, the driveways are all blind. So just, just as, as Mr. Lasts with mentioning how he likes how safe town is, but this is one aspect that they proved.
Just speaking of streets, you notice the, uh, yellow cross walking is peeling off the street at, uh, what is it, west end and, um.
You noticed that it is, okay, email about it.
Perfect.
All right, are there questions or comments from the public on tonight's staff report? Ms. Thompson?
Sure. I just wanted to give a big thanks to Gabe and Angela and Trevor for their staff report. Um, I learned a lot from it and I really appreciate the, um, first, first of all, I appreciate the approach on the feasibility study and then informing all of us of the process. And then the, um, what Angela, uh, I learned a lot from what you did, Angela, with the, uh, grant and then, uh, how we would, how we do, uh, kind of tick all the boxes at the at risk. Uh, like, um, I'm sorry, I'm just really tired right now. My doggy's been sick, so I'm just like, ah, sleep deprived. But, um, and I, I mentioned this to you before too, uh, Gabe, I just really appreciate that you're taking all this time to do really a comprehensive, um, staff report. And then this is, I'm just gonna keep all of this because this is gonna really build as we approach, get closer to, uh, the feasibility study and then finding out all the players that are involved too. So and then, and the fact that you're all networking, it's brilliant. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, other comments on the staff report? All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council and thanks again, Gabe. I thought it was a great report too. Um, future agenda items, I think I teed up the December meeting date for next, and anything else anybody top of mind right now wants to add?
I brought it up last time. I still, e- every time I walk down the street and there's nobody on the street, it's like our, our census in town is so minimal. our census in town is so minimal between the holiday houses and the STRs. It's like empty house after empty house, and I hate it. I want, I want peoples, and so.
So is your, is your request to, um,
Well, I think
Talk about the STR policy?
Yeah, I think that would be the, probably the way to go.
Okay, so then we, um, there might be a conversation about whether or not to um, about the STR committee, because we had an STR committee that we sensed that uh, when we capped our, you know, they did all the work on the STRs, and there's a whole lot of history, you know, um, we'll just add that, so we'll add this on the list of things that we'll discuss in the agenda review meeting and figure out what a good approach would be. Okay, other other topics? Anybody else? You know where to find us?
Yeah.
So, okay, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, one and all, by the way.
Hi, thanks.